Welcome to this meeting of Dundee City Council's scrutiny committee, which is being held remotely in terms of section forty-three of the Local Governance in Scotland Act 2003. All members in attendance are able to fully participate in the meeting, which is being recorded. Should any member need to leave the meeting for any reason, can they please use the chat to advise of this? If a member loses their connection, they should make every effort to rejoin the meeting. But if this is not possible, the committee services officer will note their absence for the remainder of the meeting. If you have to leave the meeting due to a declaration of interest, you must remain out of the meeting until invited back in. Would all members please mute their microphones when not speaking to avoid background noise and turn off any smart speakers? Please start the meeting with your camera on. Your face will appear on the screen when you are speaking. If your connection is poor, you may wish to turn off your camera and see if this improves matters. If this doesn't help, you may wish to quickly leave the meeting and rejoin. If you wish to raise a point of order, ask a question, speak on any item or move a motion or amendment, please use the chat when the relevant item is called. The convener will then invite you to speak. Would members of the press and public please not post messages in the chat? Where items are for noting, or where there has been no disagreement expressed, the convener will call for any member who has a contrary view to indicate this through the chat. Otherwise, the item will be agreed. Please would members not use the chat for any other purposes, as those joining the meeting by telephone cannot see the chat and therefore will not be able to follow the debate? Although we are operating in a different way, this is still a formal meeting of the committee and the required standards of behaviour and discussion are the same as in a face-to-face meeting. Standing orders will apply to the proceedings and the terms of the councillor's code of conduct will also apply in the normal way. Does any member have any queries regarding this procedure? There are no queries, convener, so I will now ask the committee services officer to take a roll call for the minute. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. We'll now take a roll call for the minute and I would ask if members could confirm their presence when I call their name. Billy Keenan, present. Billy Wright.
Present.
Billy McPherson.
Good afternoon, present.
Thank you, and I've received apologies from Billy Scott. Bailey Soares.
Yes, I'm here.
Thank you. Deputy Lord Provost Cordell.
Present.
Thank you, councillor Nakla.
Here.
Thank you, and councillor Short.
I'm here.
Thank you very much. That concludes the roll call. Item one before his declarations of interest and as well as any declarations from any members to the content of the agenda as it stands.
Doesn't appear to be any.
Okay, thank you very much. Convener takes you on to item two then, external review. The report is before you for noting.
I think it's Stuart Brown. Stuart, are you looking to say a few words before we go into questions on this report?
If I may, I'd like to do a quick introduction and happy to take any questions.
Sure. Carry on then.
Thank you and good afternoon. I'm Stuart Brown, a director in PWC's risk practice. And thank you for inviting me to join your meeting. I'm going to provide a very brief summary of what we've covered as part of this independent review, go through some of the key findings and then I'd happily take any questions that people might have. So as part of the review, we were asked to cover the following specific scope areas, to take a look at the arrangements in place during the roof replacement project and then review the current arrangements in place at the time of our review. I wanted to be clear that this was not a technical review of any works completed against the relevant standards or regulations, but a review of the processes, controls and governance arrangements in place. We met the staff across all of the departments involved in roofing projects, including construction services, housing and city development. Staff were helpful and engaged and were honest and open in their views on the process in place at the start of the roofing project and now, including lessons learned and improvements that have been made since the issue with the roofs was identified. I would like to highlight that we were limiting some of the areas regarding getting our understanding of the original process and controls in place in the early phase of the project. This is mainly due to changes in key staff and a number of staff no longer being at the council. As a key finding, it became very clear through our work, there are a number of factors that may have contributed to the failure to identify that roofs were not being fitted to the revised British standard. And these are all set out in the report, but for clarity, these included following standard customer practice for roofing projects, which are relatively straightforward and repeatable from a capital project perspective, an inconsistency and lack of clarity in the design documentation and the design documentation potentially not being appropriately reviewed by teams delivering and inspecting the works. And importantly, a lack of knowledge of the British standard had changed across all of the teams involved. There are a number of positives that we noted that I wanted to bring out and management has taken a number of steps since the issue was identified, both to strengthen the process and controls in place. These include changes such as to team structures, roles and responsibilities for those involved in capital projects, strengthening of the controls in place and a partnership agreement is now in place as well, covering all the teams involved in housing capital projects. This partnership agreement in particular is a positive step and although it's at the time of the review, it was quite high level. It provides a document for the council to sort of build on and capture key roles and responsibilities in the governance arrangements in place for the planning and delivery of capital projects. We'd identified that process maps are now in place in the likes of construction services, which provide more clarity on roles and responsibilities in governance arrangements for capital projects. And we also identified that the teams, in different teams involved, have taken steps to ensure that more training, industry briefings and alerts are made available to staff. Again, this is a positive step that will help to ensure that those involved have a better chance of picking up on any changes to standards or regulations relating to work that they are undertaking. Although we obviously identified a number of improvements I've just set out, there were still a number of areas that if addressed and we brought on this report would help to further reduce the risk of a similar incident occurring in the future. And I'll just pick out some of these. So the need for a more senior review of design and specification documentation, which is appropriate evidence, further additions to some of those new process notes and maps that are in place in construction services, a further development of the governance structures for the delivery of housing and other capital projects, which should include clear decision-making pathways, oversight and monitoring responsibilities and processes for the escalation of any issues. We also felt that it would be beneficial to have service level agreements or equivalent, which also could be fed into the partnership agreement, which really clearly define roles and responsibilities amongst the different teams involved. And reviewing the types of information needed by all teams, as I said earlier, positive steps have been made by a number of teams to make, provide access to different sources of information for staff and teams. But this isn't necessarily sort of the case for all teams, so understanding that, which could include formal training, provision of attendance at industry events and access to briefing and information portals could prove very beneficial. So just to conclude before I take any questions, in summary, the roofing project issue was a rare incident that occurred due to multiple issues coming together at the same time. And under normal circumstances, one would expect that the structures and processes originally in place would have prevented such an issue. The apparent lack of knowledge relating to the change in the British standard for slating and tiling was a decisive factor and meant that the controls in place were ineffective for this particular project. However, if the areas for improvement identified in this review are addressed, along with the improvements that have already been made, the risk of a future issue of this nature occurring would be much reduced. Thank you, I'd happily take any questions.
Can I ask if your question is for Stuart or is it for officers? Right, thanks, convener. I have one for Stuart and one for officers, basically, convener. Okay, carry on. If you do your one to Stuart then, because I may want to ask the question to Stuart myself before we move on to officers. Okay, well, I'll stick with Stuart in the first instance and it's really, I think the fall down in relation to the fact that, well, as alluded to in page seventeen, you know, as it indicates, like construction services, it would appear that those undertaking the clerical work role were not aware of the changes in British standard. Now, I would have thought, and I think members of this committee would have thought, that was just common practice that changes in regulation, changes in British standard, changes in legislation are properly rolled out amongst key staff. And quite clearly, that was a substantial and concerning failure. And I suppose my question, Stuart, is, is this something, because obviously you will undertake reviews across local authorities and other organisations, is this sort of, you know, changes in, for example, British standard or regulation not being rolled out within an organisation, something that happens regularly? Because I would have thought it was a quite unique situation. I mean, I've previously asked officers, are they satisfied that changes throughout other areas of the council's activity, where, you know, quite clearly, we live in a legislative framework, primary and secondary legislation changes regularly. Now, are we actually satisfied that that's being rolled out to the staff that know it? Are we processing things properly in relation to the law? And so I was just really wondering how unique this situation is and have you come across it before? And have you come across the situation where there are not satisfactory ways of disseminating that information amongst key staff? Actually, is how often that has, you've come across this before? Because I'm just quite concerned about, you know, this costing, quite frankly, the council taxpayer or rather the rent payer a heck of a lot of money.
Thank you, I'll certainly sort of answer this as best I can. So the dissemination of information to sort of different teams in local government is is quite a complex one, because local government organisations are very complex and do lots of different things. So it's a very hard thing to drive from the centre. I mean, obviously, key legislative changes, et cetera, often can be led by this legal team and rolled out across the council as they apply. But it often does fall down to individual services to have their own mechanisms in place to make sure they're aware of key changes in legislation and standards, et cetera, that apply to them. Have I seen an issue of this exact nature elsewhere? No, but could I see it happening elsewhere? Yes, potentially. I think the key is how do you make sure that your teams, and it's not just one team here, is it? It's a number of teams are cited on changes. And if one team isn't aware, at least one other team would be, so they could flag it or pick it up at the right point. I think that's the key.
Yeah, I'm grateful for that, Stuart. Just one quick follow-up then. You mentioned, you know, there are no process maps in place, which frankly should have been. And you had given the recommendation of service level agreements between teams. Do you know if officers have taken forward the latter matter, the SLAs, if that's actually in place?
I think I would need to defer to officers for that one, if I may, because I don't know the latest status against some of the recommendations.
Okay, thanks for that. I'm conscious, convener, you want to ask questions to Stuart. And I noticed councillor Short said the same, so I'll be quiet at that point, but I will ask about SLAs to officers in a moment. Thanks. We'll certainly come back to you. Councillor Short.
Thank you very much. I was pleased to hear that you were able to, once you kind of got in the swing of things, to go in and get the answers that you were looking for and many of the things that you were looking to see happen have already happened or in the process of happening. And I just wanted a little bit of a feel as an independent coming into a structure like a local authority, which is made up of lots of little parts that make up the local authority and that there was that culture of openness and understanding that you were there to do a specific job and you weren't certainly there to come in and start sort of a portion and brain here, there and everywhere. And that people still feel confident, having you come into the organisation, that it's a place where you are valued and the work that you do is valued on a daily basis.
Yes, I mean, as I said in my introduction, officers were very open. I didn't find any defensiveness. There seemed to be a genuine kind of willingness to sort of learn and take action. I don't think anyone, obviously, everyone was sort of quite, I'd have to say, quite devastated, I think. They were all proud of what they do in the teams and I think this was quite a shock of what had happened. And I think everybody's sort of learning from that and wants to make sure they put in place the right processes and controls going forward. And I didn't spot any issues with culture, as I say, of finger pointing between teams or this felt like there was a good engagement, I think, to get this right going forward.
Stuart, you mentioned right at the outset that it wasn't a technical report. And, you know, I suppose when I read it, I didn't see it as a technical report and probably technically seen some flaws just based on my understanding of construction and construction design. Did you have an element of your team or otherwise that would have that level of knowledge to give you a bit of guidance as to what answers you would expect from people? And as to whether, how genuinely helpful they would have been?
Yes, I mean, we didn't use any sort of construction expertise, although we do have elements of that in the firm. This was very much, the ask was to look at this from a sort of process control governance perspective, which is the lens that we applied to this. So we, because as I understand it, there has been separate reviews of sort of the technical aspects of the sort of the situation with the roofs. This was very much to say, have we got the controls and processes in place to make sure this doesn't happen again?
Okay. The other one, you obviously, you went on about the number of changes that happened in construction services. And did you see that as a bit of a hindrance or did you see that there is a potential for a whole holder of expertise or knowledge to have been lost?
That's a, that's a good question. I think the changes that have been made appear to be positive. I think there's a, I got the impression there's a sort of willingness to change, learn and move forward. I can't comment on what was there before, who was there before, because I obviously I didn't engage with them as part of this review. But it felt like there was a need to sort of modernise and there was new processes, controls being put in place, which I think will help move the service forward.
On your comments in relation to procurement, you seem to suggest that someone in procurement should keep an eye on standards as they change by asking the manufacturer. And, you know, I often, I see procurement as an order launcher and know the technical side of the business. So, you know, I'm wondering why you felt that someone in procurement could influence what we would purchase, given that, you know, we either specify the thing properly, because we don't have the same consumer protection as we would. You know, if I bought a washing machine, washing machine tumble dryer and it only operated as a dryer, I would have some level of comeback. If I had forty tonne of tiles and bought a manufacturer standard and I want to go on a roof, then, you know, that's, that's my problem, I keep forty tonne of useless tiles.
Yes, and we did have some good, good debate actually, officers and myself, about this one. And I think I was, my initial view was, being a sort of supplier myself and sometimes seeing what procurement teams can ask for, they sometimes look to seek assurances from suppliers. And it depends, and I know this is construction, so it might be very different, to get some additional source of comfort that what's, what's being ordered is the right thing or is providing advice and sort of input where they can as a supplier. Obviously, when you buy materials, that's a bit more straightforward, as you say, you're buying a tile. But I do understand that the conversation evolved with officers into the fact you can for some types of items, get warranties and where those warranties are sort of specified, that supplier will also do checks to make sure things have been fitted correctly for that warranty to be in force. So it was one thing that we built in, which officers some maybe agreed with and didn't in some cases, could be helpful in some circumstances where it's, you know, where it's deemed value for money to do it in that way, if that makes sense.
You know, that sounds reasonable, to be honest. Like, just, just my concern is, did you see what the purchase order would have looked like when we asked for the tiles? You know, that it wasn't just left down to somebody in procurement to decide we'll take something different? Because I would, you know, sorry, I would have thought it would have been technically specified by someone else and no procurement officer.
Oh, we didn't see that, although we did initially ask. I believe that information is available for some of the sort of evidence, if we needed it, to sort of have a look at exactly what was asked for. And I'm sure that that could be provided by officers if you need to see it. It was one of, it was one of those ones that we initially sort of looked to see it. It didn't come sort of, it wasn't fundamental to what we were looking at, but we were interested to see what was being ordered to answer that question, like you say. But we didn't get it at the time of the review, but it doesn't mean it's not available. I do understand that can be provided if needed.
Okay, thanks a lot. That'll do for me in the meantime. I'll hand you over to Bailey Soares, who's looking for us to question.
Thanks, convener. Stuart, it's a very comprehensive report with twenty-five recommendations. Nobody can ever guarantee that something won't happen again. Very foolish to do so, but how confident are you with if all these recommendations are put into practice, that the, I suppose the risk level is minimised to the lowest level possible?
Councillor Soares, I would definitely suggest that if all the recommendations on top of the sort of, almost a cultural shift, I would call it, from lessons learned were in place, that the likelihood of this or something very similar happening again would be quite low. I mean, you can never say never, because obviously it certainly requires manual sort of controls in respect of the knowledge that staff have. But if you've got enough touch points, if you like, and different teams and staff with the knowledge, you would hope this would get picked up and it wouldn't happen again, if that makes sense.
That's helpful, thanks. And Kevin, if I could have a question to officers when that comes around, please?
Yeah, sure, but I'm going to come back to you, Stuart, if you don't mind. Just another question that I'd jot down, I'm likely to run these similar officers as well. In relation to the quality management systems that we have. I mean, I remember some time ago, then just about a year department, the council, when it had a the kickoff investors and people wanting it to move on from there to various other quality assurance processes and yet we, it came as a surprise to me to see that only city development had a quality assurance system that's accredited and it's accredited in both ISO nine thousand and one and fourteen thousand and one, which, which you would expect. But the construction arm of, of the organisation such as Dundee Contract Services, I thought really strange that it doesn't have that level of accreditation. And I wonder if you'd sort of want to make comment about that? And, you know, surely, you know, there is nae third party check or any process that it's got to suggest that it's a quality organisation?
We, we've raised this, councillor Keenan, as a specific point. So I wouldn't want to necessarily comment on who's got the right or wrong quality management system in place, but it definitely needs to be looked at to make sure you're comfortable and officers are comfortable that the right quality management systems are there for each service. It works for city development, they've got ISO nine thousand and one because of the nature of what they do. Whether that would be absolutely applicable to for construction services, I think is something that needs to be looked at. The quality processes are in place in the manual, but they are, haven't been reviewed for quite a long time. So it probably feels timely that that should be looked at again and then considered whether an even more formal externally accredited sort of accreditation would be valid or not, if that, if that helps.
Okay, thanks very much for that. So we'll start the round again, if that may well let you off, Stuart. But if you can hang about just in case some other questions come back in as the officers aren't able to answer.
Of course.
For this item, we'd really appreciate it and thanks for the report. Billy McPherson, we'll start with yourself. Thanks, thanks, convener. I'll first of all, I've got a couple of questions. I'll first of all ask the one following on from Stuart's answer and that is really for officers to indicate the recommendation around service level agreements between relevant teams in this case, is that now in place? And also, are they satisfied, because obviously this particular function doesn't exist in isolation with a large organisation. And I'm just wanting the assurance that similar arrangements are in place across the organisation in relation to, you know, activities that are unrelated to this particular one.
Robert.
Thank you, convener. If I can perhaps start, so just, and just in relation to the wider question that Betty McPherson asks. So we have now a well-established risk and assurance board, which is looking at exactly that question across the whole of the council. So we have almost completed, in fact, at our meeting next week, we should get it signed off, a full comprehensive list of the regulations that apply across the council and the measures that are in place to make sure that we're staying up to date on those across the piece. There are a whole range of legislation that apply to our work, so there's a lot of work involved in keeping that up to date. But there are, by and large, measures in place to manage that. So there are controls. In my own service, for example, the financial, the final accounts working group, which keeps an oversight of the accounting regulations that apply for the work that we undertake. So that's the wider piece of work which we're seeking and the chief executive has short assurance from us that we are on top of all of the changes in legislation that apply to the work of the council, which is, I mean, it's an extensive piece of work, Betty McPherson. And perhaps I can allow Neil, Martin or Louise Butch to talk about the specific measures that are in place in relation to construction works?
Louise.
Yeah, I'm happy coming, thank you for that and thank you for the question, Bailey McPherson. The SLA has been reviewed by officers across the services involved. And what we now have in place is a draft that's due for final approval by executive officers on the twentieth of December. So what's been important in this review is that the officers and managers overseeing and delivering this have been involved in the development of the service level agreement, quite clearly setting out those roles and responsibilities across the varying teams involved.
Okay, thanks for that. I don't think it would be unreasonable to ask if officers could make, once that is approved on the twentieth of December, just make it available to members of the scrutiny committee. I think that would be quite helpful. My second question's completely unrelated and it goes back to the information on page seven. Now, as we're aware, and as alluded to in page seven, the estimated cost of putting all this right at the time of writing was four point four million. And I'm just really wondering if officers could give an indicate, could give an indication as to, first of all, progress with regard to putting this all right? And I'm very conscious of the number of times I contact about a repair related matter and I'm told we're behind, this is, this will be done as resources allow. And I'm just really there for wondering what progress we have and when we expect this all to be completely resolved, but also what the likely final cost is, given the challenges in relation to construction inflation, in particular in relation to capital projects? Someone, Louise?
Yeah, thank you for the question. I can confirm that the first four projects have been completed with three at final account stage. Cost wise, we're on target, Bailey McPherson, so the various variance from the original projection is minimal. And overall, I think what we're looking at is approximately six thousand of a variance versus the original projection for those first four. And time wise, we're sitting at approximately seven weeks behind. Now, what I would note that the vast majority of that is due to weather. So we've seen about hundred fifty-five hours of downtime, which is quates to about four weeks. And that's particularly around the health and safety aspect to access the roof and carry out the works. So we're working closely with our health and safety officer to ensure that our risk assessments allow us to get on the roofs at safe times.
That's fine. In terms of, you said first four, what's the total? You know, in terms of packages of work, as it were. So, you know, in percentage terms, where are we in terms of completion?
So I don't have the first four total in front of me at the moment, Bailey McPherson, but I can circulate that around in terms of the total and the percentage of completion.
Right, that, that would be helpful, because the first four, if it's four of twenty, it's a whole different ballgame than four of five, if you, if you follow my drift. So I would just really like a handle on how far are we down the road? Because clearly, the longer it goes on, the likelihood of increased cost is, is more likely. So it'd be useful if that was circulated to members of the committee, thank you. Okay. Are you finished, Preza, yeah? Okay, Bailey Wright.
Thank you, convener. Obviously, when the council declared the climate emergency, I was just wondering why officers didn't anticipate inevitable change in the building safety standards? I mean, I've seen things come to committee in the past where standards have changed. So I'm just wondering, should officers and contractors not have been thinking conscientiously about the safety of citizens? And that this has affected, as has been said before, hundreds of homes and spanned over five years. I think it's due to the diligence, the resident that reported it firstly. We have to thank him for, for that. Because God knows how long it would have gone on and how many more houses would have been affected in the cost. But this issue just didn't appear out of the blue one day. So who knew? What did they know? When did they know it? And above all else, why weren't we told at the time? Can we even be sure of how much of these repairs are really going to cost in the end? Because the 4.4 million figure was calculated in 2021. Since then, there's been inflation, it's rampant, obviously putting a tight squeeze on our wider council budget. Also, I have concerns about whether the roofs fixed initially. And I'll be looking for assurances because there are two, two house, two sets, well, one cluster, I think you call them, in the Clippington Road where the roofs are leaking again after having been redone. And I've got concerns over the quality of the job that's been done. And I'll be looking for assurances that the Scottish Quality Standard issue have been addressed. And obviously, any further jobs that are outstanding would be asked if it could be done urgently, because these people have waited for a long time.
Greg, you looking to respond?
Yeah, thanks, convener. And I'll try to respond to the points that Bailey Wright has raised and then maybe ask Neil Martin and Louise Butch to come in to give that assurance about the controls and measures that are currently in that confirm that roofs are now being delivered to the British standard. I think firstly, Bailey, right, a lot of that information you've requested in a timeline, we've included in previous reports that we've brought to committee and indeed scrutiny. But I'm more than happy to provide copies of those again to scrutiny members. We were first notified of the incident in 2009, and then we hit the global pandemic, and then we looked to get some further professional advice to the council. And then from memory, we reported that back in November last year with a plan about what we were going to do. I think in terms of the cost, Louise has outlined that based on our best estimate, 4.4 million, million with the exception of the 6,000 pound variance is where we estimate it to be, because each roof might be different in terms of the tiles that we can reuse when they're refitted, and indeed whether the buttons need to be replaced. So I can give an assurance to scrutiny and convener to the wider elected members that we'll continue to keep you updated as we progress through the replacement progress on what costs are looking like. And if needed, we may need to report back to committee, and we would do that at appropriate time for any cost variance. If I can, convener, just pass over to Neil Martin and then Louise, just to give scrutiny committee that assurance about those systems that are currently in place, which can demonstrate and show that standards are being met to the British standard. And if there are particular cases, Bailey, right, you referred to about leaking roofs, then convener, with your agreement, rather than discussing these today, I'm happy to take those off tables and come to Bailey Wright specifically on specific addresses and address any concerns that are being raised.
I mean, I'm happy enough with that. But it comes as news to me that we have got a problem with roofs we've replaced that are leaking. So is there just a yes or no?
So my understanding, and I'll maybe pass over to Louise, is that there's multiple issues going on with regards to the query that Bailey Wright has raised, convener. I'm not aware, but Louise can confirm that we've got ongoing issues with roofs that have been replaced and those being leaking. But perhaps Louise can confirm.
Thanks for that, Greg. And understanding Bailey, right, and if I could just clarify the detail of the call, that the roofs that you're referring to in the Clippington Road area are not the roofs that are due for remediation under this roof remediation programme. So I don't want to name the particular addresses at this point, but if it maybe, if you could send me over the exact addresses, I'll just verify that. And just Greg's point, there's only one in particular that I'm aware of that's within the remediation programme that we're reviewing about water ingress. And we suspect at this stage that's unrelated to the tiles and actually in relation to the chimney.
Thank you.
Okay.
Yeah, could I, could I maybe just ask, Greg, I did see about a system because we had seen new legislations or changes in legislations come and be reported to committee. Will that be the case? Do we have something in place now that that will happen?
Yeah, thanks, Bailey Wright. Part of the response to that question relates to Robert's view about the risk and assurance board. But convener, if it's acceptable, if I can maybe ask Neil to comment on the steps that his team have taken around the update to British standards and regulatory changes, and then to Louise, because we are looking at the sharing of that information along with the work that Robert outlined in the risk and assurance board. So convener, if you're agreeable, if I can pass over to Neil at this point.
Neil?
Thanks, convener. Thanks, Greg. Thanks, Bailey Wright. So yeah, in terms of obviously the roofs, since this happened in 2019, we've put enhanced controls in place in terms of highlighting changes to the BS in terms of the design and what have you. And obviously, we've been working closely with other colleagues, particularly in housing and construction services on that. And as Stuart's outlined, in terms of the report and the recommendations in that, we've been working closely and within the department and in the time that Stuart's put that report together, to consider what's in there. And we've continued with that. So in terms of going slightly wider and looking at other construction and overall compliance in terms of utilizing online resources, technical information, et cetera, that's all in place. There's regular continual professional development for staff from the design perspective, and all that shared and cascaded with construction services. And they've got the ability to tap into that and utilise that information. And as we say, we'll continue to develop how we work with construction services going forward to ensure we've got compliance, it's not just on the roofs, but all the work that we carry out.
Greg?
Convener, thank you. It's just been brought to my attention that in response to my answer to Bailey Wright, I may have noted that officers knew about the roof since 2009. That was an error. Officers knew about it since 2019. So apologies for any confusion.
I was going to pick you up on that later. But I thought it was just a no.
Can I ask, just as usually, if we do something wrong, we say sorry to people. Have we apologised to the people that roofs have had to be redone? Or is that going to happen?
Greg?
Yeah, thanks, convener. Bailey Wright, at committee last year, I offered an apology as chief executive and head of paid service for those individuals that had been impacted by this error. So that was done by me at the formal committee.
Okay, thank you.
Leonard Woolley, you got any comments for officers?
Kevin, the question I had has been answered, so I'm fine. Thanks.
Okay, cheers. Okay, I'll maybe go for a few myself. The British Research Establishment Report looked to have taken two year. Is that the case? Or, you know, what was the time scale of asking them to have a look at and getting a report back and then coming to committee? Because it looks like we knew about there was an issue, but it didn't get to committee for quite a number of years.
Convener, if I can maybe come in on that point, I don't have the exact timeline in front of me. However, I'm happy to provide that if it wasn't covered in the previous reports. But as indicated, the matter was brought to officers' attention in 2019. And then we went into the COVID pandemic in March 2020, where all services moved to business continuity, and we only provided urgent services. Once we had the report back, there was a review which had to take place internally with officers to determine the costing of replacing and the way we wanted to deal with it. And the report that was brought back to committee was brought back with an outline of what the actual problem was, and then the way officers were proposing to fix it. But unfortunately, today I don't have the specific detail in front of me.
Yeah. Okay, thanks for that. Can I ask about quality assurance? And asked when we, I notice Greg, in the background, he used the VNA. And when we were ordering the VNA, what equality assurance standards would be expected when we asked that construction company to get involved, given that, you know, pollution right on the waterfront would be an issue? And, you know, certainly quality would matter when we're spending, you know, huge amounts of money, as we are in the case of procuring roofs. So what quality assurance are we expecting when we go to tender? We expect other companies to have?
So convener, I'll maybe come in on that question and pass over to Neil to see if Neil's got anything to add. Unfortunately, I wasn't involved in the procurement or tendering for VNA Dundee. So to answer your question, I would require to go back to look at the documents that went out to the market. But given Neil leads the capital team, I don't know, convener, whether Neil will be able to maybe provide an example of what we would expect that may be more recent.
That's fine. What would we expect?
Yeah. So obviously, in terms of the VNA, it's a highly complex, highly technical, pioneering type of construction. So I would have assumed that the officers in charge at that time would have been looking at competences, financial backing, resources, how they can go about in terms of subcontracting, not just construction, but design work from that point of view. So there would be an assessment made on, from a quality competence point of view, to determine which contractors may be suitable for that. Now, those principles you would apply to any construction work, whether we're building a new school, whether we're looking at refurbishment work. And obviously, as we're speaking about a more linear programme and simpler process in terms of roofing. So it is a matter of assessing contractors and deciding on what the competences are and going with the most appropriate procurement list, if it's a competitive tender, or selecting the most appropriate framework if you're going for a direct appointment.
I suppose, you know, working in procurement to a certain extent, I would be sending suppliers a questionnaire. And within that questionnaire, I would be asking what quality assurance systems they have. You know, and so no matter how small or whatever the contract would be that we would place, are we likely to ask whether that supplier is a quality assured supplier or not? You know, would we generally look for that? Or would we think it's just as a matter anymore?
I'll comment initially. I can't comment on that across the board. But again, size and scale complexity, absolutely, you would be looking for a quality assured company because the size of business that would have that, as Stuart's outlined, in terms of covering the resist, the risk and the contact points over the business. But in terms of doing other smaller works or other procurements, it may not necessarily be appropriate. But I would think there would still be competences in terms of the quality and how they could deliver, whether it's a product or a service that we'd be assessing. But that would be something that would vary within procurement and the conditions that would be applying when we go out asking for tenders.
Yeah, I suppose I suppose you could have asked anybody, if you were going to spend four and a half million pound, would you spend it with someone that is quality assured? Or would you send it with someone that is not quality assured? Anybody be able to say, why would they spend their own money?
Convener, apologies. I think that's a really difficult question for officers to ask. And I think, you know, for us to be able to provide advice, we've reflected the position as to how we find ourselves in previous reports. And also, today's report is about that external review outlining work that has been completed to improve the process and work that we need to do to strengthen the process and reduce the chances of this occurring again.
So are we looking at Dundee Construction Service will be a quality assured organisation within what period of time? Because I don't think that we should be looking at spending four million quid with someplace that's no. You know, and, you know, the other night at committee, you know, conveners and the leader of the council waxed lyrical about the amount of accreditations that the hardworking individuals of the council are picking up for. But we've dropped a bar from the point of view of, the five organisations or five parts of council that are involved in this, there is only one we are quality assurance. The rest of them don't have it. You know, I can understand corporate finance not having it, because we've had a few blunders and they're audited off the face of the earth. But I cannot understand why we've no got a quality assurance system in place for construction, both quality and environment accreditation. Greg?
So convener, if I can just come in on that last point, I think what's important to note is that there is a quality management system, which is currently being reviewed as part of the work that we're doing within construction services. And as Stuart outlined, was last reviewed in 2016. So for the avoidance of doubt, there is a quality management system in place. Where I think we are continuing to look at in review is whether or not that goes and becomes externally accredited. And that's something that Elaine, Louise and myself and the wider team are doing as part of this review. So just to provide that assurance that there is a system in place, and we are reviewing whether or not we move to external accreditation for construction services in relation to that system.
I mean, I cannot understand how it was dropped, because we had one. And I would like to know when it was dropped and how it was dropped. And, you know, at the moment, it suggests to me we're in homework. And that to me is not good enough. So, you know, I know that there's others coming in, Greg, but.
Yeah, it's just to pick up your last question, Bailey Keenan. So my understanding is that the external verification was removed around over 10 years ago. And we can try and look at reason and rationale for that back 10 years, but records may be limited. But certainly give you that assurance that we can look to try to provide you with the information subject to information being available, convener.
Good. Robert, are you looking to make a comment?
Just briefly, convener, because quality management was one of the aspects that Press Waterhouse Coopers looked at and Stuart reported on. The recommendations in the report have been accepted. And I know that construction services and Louise and the team are looking at what that can be done and working on that. So I suppose from the committee's point of view, we can certainly come back to you with progress on that and where that's going to. I don't know whether you want an update from Louise as to where that work's going. But the report outlines that we are committed to implementing all of the recommendations in the course of the next year, recognising that making sure that a proper quality management system is in place and working effectively will take a little bit of time.
Okay. Can I maybe ask about procurement? Because I asked obviously Stuart that as well. In procurement, I mean, looking for, looking for someone in procurement to be having the conversation about standards changing, you know, seems a strange way. You would think the person in architectural services would be the one that keeps abreast of the technical changes, because someone in procurement could be procuring in paper clips a day and whatever the next order launching based on what was put on the system to order specifically for a site. As I said, you know, council don't have the luxury or consumer protection that I would do if I bought something for my house. There's an expectation when I buy a washing machine, it'll work as that, you know. So what reassurance can I get that somebody in procurement isn't the one making the decision? Or even why is he having the conversation or her having the conversation about, you know, changes in standards?
So convener, if I may, I think this is about making sure that the whole system is joined up. So I'm not expecting the procurement staff to be deciding what the specification is. But I'm expecting there to be a link between any warranty that's offered and what's an offer through frameworks for the delivery of services or products that makes sure we're taking those things into consideration. So that's coming back. Now, I would, I would be surprised if Neil Martin and his team were not thinking in the specification about we're ordering a particular type of roof tile or window or whatever it is, and whether or not a manufacturer's warranty.
whether or not a manufacturer's warranty is available. And we should be considering, well, at what price is that warranty going to cost? And do we self insure against warranty? Or do we follow through with the manufacturer's warranty and get an additional assurance on that? And it seems to me it's likely there might well be a cost and we would have to wear that benefit. So I'm not thinking that the procurement team are deciding on the specification to do with roofs, but they are a conduit between the supplier and the specification team in technical around if there is a warranty available and how should we be making sure that we comply with it? Or we're making a conscious decision that will carry the risk that we install the product properly and that we will rely on what we are doing and not on a manufacturer's warranty? So for me, it's more about that conversation, Convenor, and making sure there's clear communication across the whole of the system. It's not one part, just procuring blindly and not having a conversation with suppliers.
Okay. Councilor Shaw?
Yeah, thank you, Convenor. I think officers have probably answered my question because I was a wee bit confused with your questions and I just wasn't quite understanding, but I think I've got the gist of it now. I think the reason that we're here with this independent report is the very reason why we have to scrutinise this level. And the opportunity to do so has been really good. And, you know, from a point of view of officers coming back to say that they will be and have already taken on board those recommendations does give us that little bit of security that that's the case. But also remembering that we have a big organisation and things will happen. And this has been brought to light, but it's an opportunity to look at the wider organisation as well. And it seems to come from what I've been listening to this afternoon, that a lot of lessons have been learned. And every penny is a prisoner, as we sit now. And it is very important that we do get all these things right. And I'm pleased that we can be so open and honest and go down this journey. And thank you for allowing the questions this afternoon.
Can I maybe ask one final question, officers? Do you think that the five different pieces of the organisation, we ask different reporting facilities, is something you'd continue with? Or is there a further review of how a project like this would be done differently with less people able to contribute to an error?
Thanks, Convenor. I'm happy to come into that. I think as an organisation and having reviewed and council agreed the council plan on Monday night, you'll see that part of that is about being a modern council and looking at how we operate and how we become more efficient. And I think it can give that assurance that we continue to look at how the operate can work leaner and smoother and hopefully avoid passovers of information and learn from the roofs project. So we'll continue to keep that under review. And again, any changes where appropriate will be brought to the attention of committee.
Thanks very much for that. Doesn't appear to be any other questions. So is that report agreed? And Stuart, if you're still on the call, thanks very much for staying around. That's much appreciated. And thanks very much for your report.
Thank you.
Certainly gave us food for thought and filled up an afternoon for us.
Thank you very much. Nice to meet you all.
Okay, Willie?
Yeah, thanks very much. Takes you on to item three, the SIFRA report impacting the scrutiny committee and internal audit. This is for noting, and Cathy Wiley, Chief Internal Auditor, here speaks to that item.
Over to you then, Cathy.
Hey, thank you very much. This report is just to bring to your attention two reports that SIFRA produced recently. One of them is around a position statement on support for audit committees and one is around internal audit untapped potential. And both of these have an impact on how internal audit operates and also how the committee operates and how we interact with each other. So I've done a high level review of this. And in terms of the support for the audit committee position statement, it's an update of the position statement that was issued back in 2018. And we are already complying with the majority of the items that are in there. But at 4.6, I think it is, 4.6 on page 50, there are a few messages from that document where we might think about changing some of the way that we operate. And that's around distinction between the scrutiny and audit functions, outside support to members for specific technical skills and knowledge. For example, things like treasury management might come into that. Undertaking an annual review of the effectiveness of the committee and reporting from the committee back up to the council about the work that's been undertaken. And then also the types of information and reporting that is coming to the committee from internal audit and elsewhere in the organisation. In the internal audit untapped potential report that SIFRA produced, that was on the back of a survey that was undertaken across Scotland and asking people about the operation of internal audit in local government and police and other places. And the report concludes that things need to change and it talks about governance, assurance, independence of internal audit, how internal audit is involved with policy, et cetera. What I would say from reviewing that report is that, again, we're undertaking and doing most of the things that that's recommending. At 4.9, I've shown you the indicators that that report suggests are indicators of an effective internal audit service. I've put in a little bit of information there about what happens in Dundee City Council. And there are a few actions in the final column there at 4.9 around planned actions that I'll take forward with my team, mostly around how we're undertaking planning for next year's audit plan or around how we're presenting information to you in the reporting that we're doing. There are a few other things in terms of the recommendations from this report where we need a wider discussion with other officers around that. And some of the things in the internal audit report and the things in the audit committee report kind of overlap with each other. So once I've finished looking at the detailed guidance, which only came out in September around the operation of the audit committee, I'll speak to other officers and hopefully come back with another report, which will either have recommendations for changing the way we're currently doing things or maybe an action plan, which will include some items that we might need to think about further. But the plan would be to bring something back, hopefully to the next committee, but certainly shortly.
Thanks very much for that.
Take any questions.
Thanks very much for that, Cathy. Is there any questions for Cathy on this? Is that report agreed? Thanks then, Cathy. We look forward to receiving that report, updated from yourself. Thanks. Willie?
Yeah, takes on to item four, internal audit reports. And this is also for noting and Cathy Wiley to speak to that item.
Okay, you want to go through these, Cathy? And we'll see if there's any questions. We'll do them one at a time or something. That'll be probably the easiest way to do it.
Yeah, that's fine. Thank you. These are all the reports that have been finalised since the last time we reported to you. So the first one on page 55 is the discretionary housing payments. The scope of that was to look at the arrangements for the assessment and award of discretionary housing payments. And the overall conclusion was that there is basically a sound system of control. However, there were a few areas that were identified where improvements can be made. And three routine recommendations have been made around updating guidance, formalising the quality assurance checks and also making sure that the systems notes are always updated in the system to provide an audit trail for each item. These have been discussed with the service and an action plan agreed and the actions are in progress and will be monitored through Pentana in the usual way. But happy now to take any questions. I would say David Vernon is in the call today. Obviously, I've just come in at this stage at the finalisation of this, so I don't have the detailed knowledge of this report at this stage. So David might help me to answer questions if they're audit related. Thank you.
No problem. Billy McPherson?
Thanks, Convenor. Thanks, Cathy, for the introduction and indeed welcome to the committee. The, I don't have any particular large concerns about the way DHPs are handled. I find the team are very efficient, they're also very helpful. And my question's really on the second of the recommendations. And it's really about the quality assurance checks. Now, I understand that the high value payments tipping point, if you like, is a payment of £600 or more. So my question are really, I assume therefore there's a check on every payment that's above £600, which is obviously more than many DHPs that are awarded. But also, what is the sample of other awards? What's the size of that sample in terms of the overall caseload?
David?
Thank you. Yeah, I'll come in on that one. So I've been back in touch with the service and spoke to them about that one. The £600 was in relation to the housing benefit prepayment checks. So as part of the work in terms of the work that we did, they have a look, they've had a look at that as well as all high value payments. So they're now looking at everything over £1,000 in relation to higher value payments because the £600 for the housing benefit prepayment checks have been in place for quite a while. So they're now looking at all checks of all costs at over £1,000. Apart from that, it is just a random sample they take in terms of other payments that they'll be looking at as part of the quality assurance checks.
When you say random sample though, what's the scale of that sample? Is it 1%? Is it 10%? Is it 50%?
I don't have that information to hand to Council McPherson, but I can get that for you.
Okay, okay. Two bits of information and copy it circulated to the committee. One is the extent of the random checks and also what percentage of DHPs are actually above this? You know, you've updated the 600 to 1,000. So what percentage of DHPs paid are actually over 1,000? So that's two bits of information I'd really like. And I'll just wait for that to be circulated. Thank you.
Okay.
Yeah, thank you very much. There's no other questions on that particular item, so we'll move on, Cathy.
Okay, thank you. The next one is around additional waste bin service. And the scope here was to review the processes for applying for and allocating the additional general waste bin permits. And again, the overall conclusion was that there's a basically sound system of control in place with some areas where some improvement can be made. And again, there are three main areas where some routine recommendations have been made. And these are around formalising the review process that's in place to make sure that all permits issued are still valid. A little bit more work around making sure that we've got as much supporting evidence from people as possible when they make their application so that we can not have to refuse an application just because evidence wasn't available around it. And also a recommendation around digitalising the forums online for the applications. And again, there's an action plan being agreed and in place for these. So happy to take any questions. And again, I might ask David to help me if there's anything on the specifics of the audit.
From Fraser, you want to come in?
Thanks, Convenor. Yeah, again, I think it's an area that's, you know, pretty well run. And now we've got, you know, obviously we've had the additional waste bin service for a little bit of time following the restriction on the number of grey bins you can have. It sort of makes sense to have a review process. And obviously, an online change circumstances type form, I get all that. My question's really about what's been happening about supporting evidence. So somebody doesn't supply an email address. And therefore, am I right in saying they're up to nil, there's been no follow-up at all then and they're just presumably they're not awarded without that evidence? So presumably, if someone hadn't supplied an email address, it's what we're understanding that these were just refused?
David? Yeah, I can come in on that one. Because there was no email address provided, there was not an ability to go back to the service. So there is a deadline where it cuts off. So if additional evidence is not provided at the time of the application, then the application would fall. So it wouldn't be awarded, it just wouldn't be actually determined. So by making the improvement, we're asking people for the email addresses that I'm from because that's the easiest way to get it. But apart from that, we're looking at other ways to try and get information and how basically how to be able to get in contact them. So be able to ensure that their application can continue and a decision can be made on whether they can or cannot get a bin.
Okay, I don't want to be a bit stupid about this, but what was ever preventing them? Just sending a letter to the person, asking them to follow up or they wouldn't be awarded. I just find it quite incredible that these just fell because the evidence wasn't supplied. Now, I appreciate that we're now getting to a situation that there will be an attempt to follow up. You know, picking up a phone, if the phone number's supplied, or actually just sticking a letter in the post, doesn't strike me as beyond the way of man or woman. So, yeah, I'm glad it's been resolved, but I'm just a little bit perturbed that we just refused some simply because in their initial application, they didn't supply all the evidence required and didn't happen to have an email address.
Are the officers able to answer? Billy McPherson?
Convenor, can I please? And thank you, Billy McPherson, for the comment. Yeah, I think the point has been well made. The benefit of doing the audit was to try and find out and ascertain if there was any issues we could, you know, further improve this process. I think the internal audit has helped to furnish those recommendations. We'll certainly take on board the points that have been made. And as David had pointed out a second ago, we are looking to obviously ensure that there is a kind of fail safe so that we can contact anyone who makes a legitimate request and not necessarily with an email because not everyone has got that, particularly elderly. Elderly people are happy to take that on board and it's noted within the report, really.
I'm grateful for that, Mr Boyle. I don't wish to appear, you know, pedantic about this, but, you know, 40 years ago, I worked in the benefit office of the district council. If somebody put in a benefit claim and didn't provide all the evidence, we wrote them a letter, there was no email then. We wrote them a letter and asked them to bring it in. And we did say in that letter, if you've not brought it in in a certain amount of time, your claim will fall. And, yeah, I just don't view that as particularly rocket science. So I'm grateful it's been resolved. I'm just surprised if it existed in the first place, but there we go.
Can I ask if there is a mechanism for when they no longer meet the criteria and the bin comes back in? Is it a yearly permit that's issued?
Thanks, Convenor. I think, well, I go again, sorry, thanks, Convenor. Yeah, that's part of what we're looking at. If you look at that first, the first recommendation that a review process will be formalised so that we can regularly check that permits are still valid.
Many do we think we've got over the city?
We have got 1,578 exactly at this moment in time.
1,578?
Yep.
Well done, Tony. Okay, no other questions on that item? Over to yourself, Cathy.
Thank you. The final report that we're bringing today is the business continuity planning. And the scope of this was to review the service level of business continuity plans to make sure that they'd been updated for the context of COVID-19 and any lessons that had been identified locally and nationally as a result of the work done around that. And we looked specifically in services where the progress and changes had already been made in their business continuity plans. And again, the overall conclusion here is that there is basically a sound system of control, but there were some areas where we would be able to make some improvements around this. And these are really around to do with consistency of approach and making sure that we're using the same template for all the business continuity plans so that any critical areas are not missed out and that they all are considering the same things when they're putting the plans together. And so that's what the three recommendations that we have there are around, just making sure that there's that consistency. And also to make sure that the areas that haven't already updated their business continuity plans do actually take that forward. So again, there's an action plan being agreed around these.
Thanks very much. I suppose from a business continuity point of view, I think we've done well from the point of view of coping through COVID. And I suppose the fire at Henry's Cafe that closed the east wing of the offices for a few weeks, you know, were able to pick that up and people moved back to home fairly quickly. So that's a reassurance that, you know, that that business continuity has been able to keep going. So well done to those staff involved. Councilor Shaw?
It was just really a continuation on from yourself, Convenor. We've seen the pandemic, we've seen the death of the Queen, we've seen pockets of fire. And as a council and a wider city, we seem to keep bouncing back and it's credit to the people. And it's credit to the people across the city who really do care about Dundee. And, you know, to see that there's just a little bit of kind of pulling together of a couple of departments so that they're in sync should be genuinely a good thing for us to see because we've seen and proven that we can do it. And and I also believe that some things that have been seen and delivered have shown that at times we can be fleet of foot. And I think having a new chief executive, which is very young, dynamic person who's come in and seen that we could be fleet of foot, I think he's gone on at the front foot with that as well. So really, really pleased to see this one. And as always, thank you to to everybody who does go out and do that day of work, whether they're waving to me from their bin vans in the morning or they are, you know, digging up the grass and whistling as they go along with their work. There there's so many people within this organisation that obviously do their work with pride and and they don't often get to come to a theatre like this. But I'm sure it's disentimate it, dissimulate? No, I'm sure you tell them all what a great job they do. And I'll get my teeth changed for the next time I come in. Thank you.
Yeah, thanks for that. Okay, there's no other questions on that report. Thanks to Cathy and David for that. So we'll move on then, Boyle.
Yeah, thanks for the most. I'd like to find him before his internal audit plan progress report. And again, Cathy Wiley, Chief Internal Auditor, is here to speak to the item.
So this is just a progress report with the whole of the plan. And also, it includes the information about the six items that were carried forward from the twenty twenty one twenty two plan. I'm working on the supplementary papers that were sent out, so I'm on page three of those where there is the start of the twenty one twenty two internal audit plan. And you can see from that that there were six items carried forward. One has been reported today, which was the business continuity planning. Four others are at draft report stage and we're at various stages of finalising these. And there was one that hadn't been started, which is cybersecurity. But we have confirmed that we will take forward a piece of work around cybersecurity. But the scope of that has still to be agreed. If you then move on to page four and onwards, then you'll be able to see just by looking at the colour coding in the right hand side of that, that we are still at the stage where we have a number of items which are either not yet started or they're at the planning stage and very few have actually been reported. I think having reviewed this when I when I came in, I think it's highly unlikely that we'll be able to produce all of these reports by the end of May, which would allow them to be included in the reporting for my annual report in June. So I've been undertaking a review of the report, sorry, the plan to see what we might be able to take out of this on a risk assessed basis, but also to make sure that we're still covering enough work for me to be able to give my opinion in June without any reservations and or rather any limitation of scope. And what I would would like from members today, if there is anything in particular in the plan that you would like to see kept in, if you can either let me know in the comments after I'm finished presenting this or indeed just drop me an email or or an email to David Vernon, if you'd rather just to let us know if there's anything you specifically would like to keep in. What I will do once we've finished that review is to bring a report back to the next committee explaining what I've taken out of the plan, why I've taken it out and what the implications for that are. And I'll also, where possible, note if there are other routes of assurance that we can use instead of the audit for this particular year. Some of the items that we take out of the plan will automatically be put into the plan for the following year. But some of them, I might I might decide that things have moved on and we don't need them if we're looking at other risk assessed things. Sorry, that's my phone ringing in the background there, but I can't reach it to hang it up and shut it up. So that's that's really all I just really wanted to say about this. Really, it's just to 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 recognise that we won't be able to deliver all of this in the time that we've got left in the year.
Okay, thanks very much for that. I'll see Billy McPherson's last question.
Thanks, convener. And thanks Cathy for that update. My question's around cybersecurity and the the updated report alludes to what the initial draft didn't, which was that the audit hadn't been completed and it would be considered for audit. We've now got an assurance it will be in the twenty two twenty three will be completed as part of the twenty two twenty three audit plan. The fundamental question I suppose I've got is that the original assurance we were given was that the, if you like, all the key elements of our cybersecurity arrangements would be audited. What it now reads is our revised tailored piece of tailored piece of work will be completed. Suppose the assurance I'm wanting to know is that the key elements of our arrangements will be audited, given that this is an area of obviously given issues that are well up with Dundee City Council, they're worldwide. It's it's obviously an element of, you know, it's it's an area of risk, frankly.
Yeah, I can give you that assurance. I haven't I haven't discussed the the detail of this scope to any great extent with other people, but what I'm thinking is that we would do something which would look at the risk register and we would audit the controls that are noted in the risk register to make sure that they're operating. And we would also have a look at some of the lessons identified that have come out of the CIPA experience to see what we've done within the council around what they've publicised to help other people make sure they don't end up in the same position that they did.
Thanks very much for that. That's that strikes me as a very sensible approach, Cathy. I'm perfectly happy with that. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
There's no other questions on that report then, so we'll move on. Thanks very much again, Cathy.
Thank you.
Yeah, thanks very much. Item being agreed, item six, then before he's by annual reporting complaints. This is also for noting in this report by the chief executive.
Yeah, so if you want to make any comment on this report.
Thanks, convener. I'll just give a very quick introduction. So this is our latest complaints report, given the performance statistics for the first half of twenty two twenty three. And it shows how we're continuing to learn from our complaints to try and improve services. There's a lot of detail, but the key information summarised at five point one. I would probably highlight a couple of positives in a couple of areas for improvement. So you'll see eighty five percent of complaints at stage one were closed within the five day target. And the average number of days is coming down from to four point three from five point five last year. It's also reassuring that there were no complaints investigated by the ombudsman this year, sorry, last year. And a couple of areas for improvement would be around the twenty day target. So we're looking at some of the benchmark and and looking to see how we could improve that. We're also going to have a little look at the upholding of complaints just to satisfy ourselves that people are properly assessing the complaints and properly recording them as they go through the process. So we'll be doing a bit of quality assurance. What we will be doing is putting in some extra statistics, going out to services just around the five and twenty day targets to make sure that services are clear about where they're maybe not meeting those and what they could do to improve them. And we'll be organising some more training sessions. We trained over a hundred officers last year. So we've got a few more this month and next month. So we'll be looking to continue to train people and also highlight the reason why complaints are important, why they have to be dealt with in time and obviously what learning can be done. And just to put into context the number of complaints, you'll see it appendix two. We've put some infographics showing the scale of interactions the council has with their citizens. So our complaints is a very small number, but very important that we get and deal with them properly. And also, appendix five is just the compliments that come in as well. And I'll pause there and take any questions.
Yeah, councilor Shaw?
So if you'll indulge me, convener, to quote to quote the Lockie Bard in General Yosie's grant, when he said that was a mighty small town for a mighty long bridge. We really do punch quite a lot when it comes to the amount of work that comes through this council. When you look at appendix two and councillor Crookshank will tell you how much I love emoji. Papers by emoji are always my favourite because you see it right there in black and white. And they actually, the the depth and the breadth and the amount of work that the council does and delivers. And if you kind of sit on the bus and listen or get a taxi or just generally mosey round town, and you feel like you're always hearing a complaint, but when you see how much we deliver, we're actually delivering so much that we should be incredibly proud to see the amount of scope there. And it's the serious stuff as well. These are the really serious things like initial referrals to child protection. It's all of these really big, important parts of life. And sometimes we forget about it because we get lost in the minutiae of the bonny grass or, you know, how how much litter is in the city square. But it's all the really life and day to day vulnerabilities of people that's laid clear in this. So again, it's this is an opportunity to say we do do a really good job. And yes, of course, there'll always be complaints because this is Dundee and that's what we like to do. I am a self-confessed Dundee complainer. I'd never take out of me or I'll never do this job properly anymore. But I have to say that the addition in the last number of years with compliments does actually make it feel good to see that there is another side of it. Because if we get them, I always tend to to give them back to those who have been involved. So it's good to see that people can pick this up as a paper and look at it as well. So thank you, convener. That was my indulgence for Christmas.
All right. Thank you very much for that indulgence. Billy McPherson?
Thanks, convener. A couple of questions. First one's in relation to the information at five point one. And in relation to, and Andrea alluded to, in relation to meeting the twenty day target in particular, because as it indicates, the 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 stage two target had dropped quite significantly, seventy one percent to fifty seven point eight percent. And is there any, I I realise, and Andrea did allude to this, that services will be reminded about the importance of meeting performance targets. And I get the fact that when stage two complaints have a degree of complexity about them, I understand that. I'm just really wondering if there's any particular pattern as to why that dropped. And the second question, because I might go just wrap them both up at the same time, is on page seventy one. And it's really in relation to neighbourhood services and in particular environment complaints received. Because there's a really significant increase. If we look at April to September twenty two twenty three at one hundred and thirty eight and compare that, for example, to the low point, which was nineteen twenty equivalent period, it was only fifty eight. And I was just really wondering if there's any particular reason and what particular areas of that work have seen this significant increase in complaints?
So on on the twenty days, Bailey McPherson, what I would say is that it does tend to be more complex cases. So when we do drill down and look at it in detail, they do tend to be around children and families and health and social care. And children and families have particular issues just around sometimes where it's parents or carers they're needing to speak to in their school holidays. So we do try and have a look at that. So we're continuing to just look at that in a bit more detail with the complaints review group as well and trying to get people to close them, come on, close them off as much as we can. When we go down into a bit of detail, there are a few that take us out with that, but they aren't significant numbers. So when you look at the number of days taken to complete stage two, you can see the average isn't significantly high. So we'll continue to work on that and the training will pick that one up again. And the additional data going out to exec directors will also highlight the need to complete the the stage two ones within that twenty days where where it's possible.
Thanks. And and on the informational page seventy one that I mentioned about the jumping environment complaints.
Yeah, so we've done a bit of a detailed look at that. So I think Tony wants to come in and just answer that one.
Thanks, Andrea. Thanks, Bailey McPherson. Yeah, we have looked at that in in great detail and we've got a couple of specific things to update the committee on. On the specific question that was asked with Billy McPherson, I can confirm that forty six percent of the complaints were about missed bin collections. Twenty two were about bin delivery issues. Fourteen percent of the complaints actually related to construction. We've got a new way of reporting that, as we'd advised scrutiny before, so that they won't feature in future versions of the report. They represented about nineteen calls. But the overall issue to to get straight to the point of the question was that there was a large number of complaints around April and May of this year. And these related mainly to waste collection and disposal related complaints. This was at a time, I should remind the committee, that we did have COVID restrictions in place. And we did have sickness, related staff sickness absence, which was higher than normal. I just want to provide some reassurance to the scrutiny committee that my team are looking at this on a regular basis and undertaking performance reviews locally within the operational depots. I'm pleased to update that since June to September of that period, we've we've returned to kind of normal levels. That coincides with us returning back to kind of more normal operational working arrangements in relation to the the post pandemic. And again, just to put some context into things, when you look at the overall number of collections we undertake, it's about six million collections during that period. We've undertaken ninety nine point nine one percent of collections without complaint. But that's not to say we need to address each and every one of those complaints that we do get very quickly. And one thing just to close on, I would advise that I'm again happy to advise that ninety nine point three percent of the complaints that we got were turned around within an average of two and a half days. So I hope that assists Billy McPherson.
Thanks for that. I'll be quite frank and say I have nothing but the greatest respect for the 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 staff and the the bin and recycling collection service. Jeff Holcott and his team are very approachable. I suppose in a way, the question is, when is a complaint a complaint? Somebody contacts you and says, my bin was missed. You email them, it gets sorted that morning. You know, that's to my mind, that's just part of the running of the service, if you know what I mean. And I'll be honest to say, I get far more longstanding issues that are on streetscape, which Mr Boyle's aware of my views on that particular area. We'll not necessarily drill into that today. But I would just say as a general point, you know, I take I take Mr Boyle's point about in relation specifically to the bin collection service, this is small in relation to a huge number of collections in a year. And I and I have to say, I think the staff undertake that with a great deal of professionalism and customer service. So I have no concerns as such about the the bin service at all. I think the staff do a jolly good job.
I think thanks for that, Fraser. It kind of leads me on to the same. Tony, I think I think your staff does do do a great job in resolving some of these issues and extremely quickly. And I think it'd be good if you could pass that on, that, you know, we appreciate the service that they deliver on behalf of the citizens of Dundee. It's probably why you were able to tell whether there was fifteen hundred and seventy eight bins because you probably took two of them up the road for me this morning. And the numbers went up, so good for keeping a tab on that as well. You did, of course, there mentioned that construction services will be reported differently. And and that kind of leads me to the, how how will it be reported and how does it get to scrutiny? Because, you know, when I look at this report, and I think there's been a lot of changes that were made over a period of time. But the first item that was on the agenda this evening or this afternoon was a screw, was an item of complaint that took three years in the resolve and probably shouldn't have really far off the end until such times as it is resolved. So it's not a two day or a two and a half day success story. I know it was a bit more difficult than that, but, you know, I'm wondering how that, as we see something that goes on for that period of time, it prompts us as councillors to ask more questions of officers so that there's stronger scrutiny. And if you're able to make comment or Andrea?
Bailey Keenan, what, sorry?
Sorry, Andrea, if you want to go.
Bailey Keenan, when Tony mentioned about being reported differently, it was the fact that up until the recent change from construction and housing merging, the construction services was under environment when it was reporting. the construction services was under environment when it was reporting through the complaints. So it'll now sit under housing and construction. So it'll just be in a different grouping. But all the complaints will still go through the same process that we currently have in place for the rest of the council.
So how would I see the earlier one reported? Because, you know, it's went on three year. And as I say, it's until the last roof's happy and it's no leaking, then, you know, it's not really, it's not really closed. Greg?
Yeah, thanks, convener. Andrea may want to come in, but you raised that point previously. And the last complaints report that came up to scrutiny committee, it showed the length of time and we reported the complaint that was over the year's period. So I think Andrea will be able to provide more information at the frequency when we'll be including that detail. But it was included in the previous complaints analysis, following on from comments that you'd made at other meetings. But perhaps Andrea, convener, can confirm the frequency of when that will come to scrutiny?
Yeah, so longstanding complaints data, we would add that in at the end of year report. So we had a new category added in so that you could see where we had complaints that spanned sort of long term. You could see when they were actually, how long they were taken to close off. Obviously, as a complaint comes in, it has to go through the process and be closed off as quickly as it can. I think what maybe you were also saying is that if the person's roof hasn't been completed yet, is their complaint completed? Their complaint would be completed because we would be saying, we know that that's an issue and we've got it scheduled in. So the complaint wouldn't just sit on our system as open for three years if we were closing that off. And the person would go through the stage two or to the ombudsman if they were dissatisfied with how we were dealing with their complaint.
Okay, thanks very much for that. And as there's no questions and no more items, Greg, could I let you go here merely if he's that way inclined? I'll wish you all a very Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year. Hopefully, the new year will be extremely prosperous. If your lottery comes up, remember I'm quite poor and please look after me, okay?
If you believe that, you'll believe anything. Thank you, convener.
Thank you.
Bye.